Thank you better than that for you. It's true. But I can give a thumbs up. Okay, I've got a thumbs up. We're live. Thank you very much. Time slipped up on me. All right, so this is our meeting in preparation for our first meeting in April. So we have our work session. We have a couple of things that I'm happy to say we're going to take a look at. First is going to be the airport update. Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Pardon are both here to talk about the, basically, the master plan and give us an update on what all has been going on out there, all the grants we've been getting and approving and being happy to accept. So whoever wants to go first, Rodney or Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. We have a PowerPoint presentation coming up that Carrie and Kelly's put together. And Carrie and Chris and Tony flew around some of these other airports. You'll see some of their terminal buildings. And what they did is went and picked out the best of the best so we could push it all together, make us a real nice terminal building. So this airport layout plan that was approved of by the board back in 2013 has been on there since way before then, I know since 2005. This is a project, just recently, the funding has been available with that 4.5 and a little bit better grant that was received from the FAA and the government. So I guess at this time, Carrie will work on the, go over the PowerPoint presentation for you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to try to do two things that are totally abnormal. First, for a Southerner, it's abnormal to talk fast, but I'll try to talk fast. And secondly, it's abnormal for an engineer not to get down into weeds. And I'll try to stay out of the weeds.
We'll keep you out of the weeds.
You'll keep me out of the weeds for sure. It's been a pleasure to be working at the airport since 2005, and I'll tell you, we've come a long way. That is Starkville Airport in 1960. That airport started in 1934 and was taken over by the Army Air Corps during World War II and then given back to the city of Starkville, I think, in the late '40s, early '50s. And that's what it looks like in 1960. This is the runway that we're using right here. This is basically the airport road to orient you. But that's kind of a benchmark. Here is the opening page for the Mississippi Department of Transportation Aeronautics website. And guess what's on the page? The George M. Brown Field is featured on their website and has been for quite a while. That is the state of the airport right after we completely rehabilitated the runway in 2010. And it really needed it. That was a dramatic improvement to the runway surface that was done there. For future reference, where the airport terminal that we're going to be talking about is going is riding this area right here. Parking lot right there, right there. We'll be talking about runway extension a thousand feet off the end, the extension of the parallel taxiway, both of which were made possible by acquisition of land to extend our runway protection zone down there earlier this year. And we're in the middle of the design of those improvements right now. This is unratable, so you've got to handout. This summarizes everything from 2005 to 2025 as far as expenditure is at at the airport. And if you look down at the summary at the very bottom, total of all projects, $35.3 million is the total. And the total local funding to support that is about $2.3 million. Most of that, and the percentage of local is 6%. The only reason it's that high is there's a requirement. We have built one, two, three, four hangars are included on this. And MDOT now requires that you, that the local match be 50% of everything under the drip line. So that's where the projects come from. They're in excess of just 2.5 or 5%. We've got a few projects in here that were 0% matched. So really, a lot of bang for the buck in terms of federal projects. The code, if there is one, in the description of the projects, if you see blue, those projects, we don't have the funding in hand yet. You'll see a blue under the MDOT. That application was sent in earlier this week, and we'll get to what that application is going to be used for. But in addition to that, there's about $1.1 million that we do have already obligated to us that is not included in that $35.2. So a lot of money and a lot of money in the last few years. This is the runway extension. The yellow is the extension of the parallel taxiway and the main runway. The hatched area is the land we were able to purchase. And the red area going into that area is a requirement for what we had to purchase in order to extend the runway. That's held us up for about 10 years. And honestly, if it weren't for Russ Rogers, we'd still be trying to get that land. So kudos to local attorney and former president of the airport board, Russ Rogers. This is our competition, in our mind, terminal building wise. The SEC travels. We have SEC teams coming in here. We have our folks going to SEC games elsewhere. And so we kind of, and I will tell you that for a number of years, the terminal facilities at Starkville Airport have really been bringing up the bottom of the SEC.
Rear. Rear's the word you're looking for.
Yeah, we're the caboose, and we're about to get closer to the engine with what we have coming up. That's our terminal right now. The reason we have that is we have straight line winds that came through and wiped everything out back about in the late '90s or so, 2000. And that large hangar was built in order to replace hangars that were demolished. And we had a little brick block building that the mayor's familiar with, Flight School is out there, it was demolished. We had a maintenance facility that was demolished. Those two were kind of the points where visitors came in to the airport. And with that gone, so with $150,000 added on to that project, which happened to be one year's of entitlement funds from the FAA, that 1,035 square foot addition was made on the side of the hangar. And it's nice, but it's small, and it's very, very limited. And so anyway, that's where we are. That's just a photo I have. That's what you typically see when you go to, Bessemer's not a big town, Bessemer, Alabama Terminal, photo I had from years back. This is a new terminal in Raymond, Mississippi, home of Heinz Community College. The Heinz community has a presence there on the field. That's the street side entrance to it. That's the airside entrance to it. There's a shot of the interior. Really nice facility, and that was completed, I think, in 2018 or so, so pretty much brand new. This is Madison, Mississippi. That's the street side terminal for Madison. I probably didn't have to tell you where that was. But that's street side, that's airside view of it, just a delightful structure. And it really did elevate. They were in a double wide trailer for a while before getting this, so talking about daylight and dark, they really had it. That's the interior of that structure, just awesome. Even though it's, it would not meet the needs that we have because of the number of people we have coming in on flights, we've got some really good ideas there about segregating some facilities in terms of employee space and transient space that is not done that well everywhere that we went. This is the Ole Miss Airport. It's actually owned by the university. It's University Oxford Airport. That's street side. That's some of their landscaping up close. That's the airside, not a lot to write home about. This is really neat. That facility, the core of this facility will handle a ton of people. Interestingly, this was funded by a dentist from out in Florida that donated money for it. The university guy says, "Oh, we don't need anybody to design this thing." So fiscal grant people designed it. And what did they do? They put luggage lockers like they'd seen in Memphis Airport and big airports where you can rent them, you know, and take the key with you. And we asked guys, said, "What do you do with those lockers?" They said, "Absolutely nothing." So that's the biggest embarrassment about this whole thing. But anyway, really nice space. We're going to do a whole lot better than brake area that they have. We're going to do a whole lot better on the capacity of the restrooms. Really don't match the capacity of this space. You got, you can handle tons of people in this core space, but the restrooms just really don't support that well. So learned a lot of lessons everywhere that we went. There's a lot of red and blue in that place, I'll tell you. This is the crown jewel of all the terminals in the SEC. This is Auburn, Okauckee Airport. Auburn has 1,000 students in a flight training program over there. They enrolled 300 just this past year. This is the street side of that terminal. That's the street side entrance to the terminal. That's the street side as viewed from the terminal, just extraordinarily delightful. Airside, which is kind of off the charts. Number of areas all the way around, you see this covered space here, rocking chairs there. All throughout this building, you can't take two steps before you find a space and be very comfortable to sit down and visit with somebody. Just the space is extraordinary. That's the airside entrance close up, and you see the observation deck up top. That's the view of that deck from the inside. There's a floor plan for the first floor of the building. Counter space with a lot of information presented on screens. And that blooming tiger takes up space for about 12, 14 people, you know. So I think they made a real error when they didn't dispense with a tiger and suspend a war eagle up in that space and use the space. But anyway, that's just some of the space around. Very open environment. You can see the structure of the building, and it's just a very well-designed, that building, believe it or not, is about, it was either built in 2010 or 2013. I can't remember. But it looks just like it was moved into yesterday. And there's more space. We won't be able to do anything quite that large, but we really want to try to do something that's every bit that nice and that useful. So this is the, we're working with another engineer on this that I've worked with since 2005. They have done a lot of terminal buildings. They're a large firm, but they're, our terminal project has to be, has to be out for bids by July 31. And that was predicated on us getting a go by the second week in December. We didn't get a go on this thing, didn't get notice of the grant until almost the, it was the third week in February. But we had had kind of encouragement, you know, "You guys need to be moving, need to be moving." We've been doing, we had all of our environmental done, which was pretty easily taken care of and had people lined up and ready to go. The reason that Barr's Design Solutions is not going to be designing this is their architecture staff didn't have the bandwidth to turn it out in the limited time, turn it out. There is a, there's an architecture firm that they had worked with on airport facilities and terminal facilities, Say Say Litchfield. They're a large southeastern firm. The guys we're working with are headquartered in Duthon. The lead architect we're working with is Tony Coleman. Tony Coleman is a 2017 graduate of the Mississippi State University College of Architecture and a delightful young man. I've been extremely impressed with him. This is our first cut at the first floor floor plan. There's a second floor floor plan. That's going to look totally different, but that's, we made a list of rooms. Mike took a look at it. Rodney took a look at it. Russ DeBuchelone, a lot of pilots we had, you know, we want a list of space that we need in terminal building. So a lot of people collaborated, made a list. Tony put all that together, and that's a result of that, and that is moving forward as we speak. This is the airport layout plan. This is where the terminal building will be, right here. This is the parking lot for the terminal building. It may look totally different, probably will. We are doing a pen and ink change to the airport layout plan. We are really short on ramp space at the airport. So with these large corporate hangars in the plant to serve needs close to the terminal, and this is a large hangar space, we decided we'd probably prefer to have more hangar space. We've got plenty of places to put hangars. We don't have plenty of place to put ramp space. So we're, that ramp right there will increase the ramp space that we have by 81% over what we have.
Did you say 81%?
81%. Now, at peak times, with that ramp space, we hope that we will only have to use the Raspet ramp, some, you know, two Raspet ramps, you know, what we call the Honda Building and the old original ramp. There's ramp space down there. There's some ramp space down south on the hangar, and there's some other places you can put airplanes. In the past, we have filled up our ramp, all those places, and parked a row of jets on a parallel taxiway during peak game days. Just close the north parallel taxiway to park jet aircraft. And of course, they can't pull out and go around each other so that one, you know, you get the picture. This, hopefully, will keep us from having to park anything on the taxiway and allow us to accommodate most of the traffic here on this, on the ramp. In terms of funding, the funding, we didn't get full funding. The program that we did get funding from is a five-year program. We got funded in year two of the program. We have three more rounds of funding next fall. We will have completed the design on both the terminal and the parking area. We will have bid it, and we'll know what the gap is between what we have and what we need, and we'll reapply in the third year to close, to eliminate that gap, we hope. So that handles the funding for the terminal, that handles the funding for the parking, but it doesn't do anything for the funding for the ramp improvements. This program does not do airside ramp. So we just applied this week for $192,000 MDOT grant to do the design work on that, on the ramp. MDOT loves to fund projects where they're collaborating with other funding agencies. We have about $1.15 million in obligated funds in a, once again, a five-year program. We've used only one year of it, so we've got four years left. That totals about $1.15 million, and that will go toward that. And then the final gap, we're hoping, the remaining gap, we're hoping to close with an ARC grant. So we'll have FAA money, we'll have MDOT money, we'll have ARC money, I think. Both ARC and MDOT will be, both those agencies love to collaborate with other funds. So that's the short version on the funding of that ramp. Given the time it takes to build a terminal building, we're working to have the terminal, parking lot, and that ramp constructed to where it's all usable at the same time. Yes?
One of your first slides showed the SEC suitcase and, you know, all the SEC schools. So what is the university's role in this?
Right now, the airport is locally arranged, just recently rearranged to be 35%, city 35%, county, and 30% university. And the role that the local entities have played is in putting together matching money for the grants and according to that formula.
Unfortunately, the airport is making money with fuel sales, and so it's able to assist without us kicking in as much as we're going to kick in. So I wanted to say too, that it's a relatively minor portion of their overall budget that the university can see.
Normally, that ramp could be funded with AIP funds, but at this point in time, all of our AIP funds are obligated through about 2025 during the runway extension, parallel taxiway extension. That project also does a full overlay of the runway, which is needed. It replaces the runway edge lights and replaces the precision approach path indicator lights.
PAPs.
PAPs. New PAPs. We've been needing new PAPs. Places that have jet traffic, FAA says you're supposed to have a four light PAP system. We've been working on a two light PAP system since the beginning.
Do we have a precision approach both ways, north and south? Precision approach both ways, north and south?
Yes.
Okay. One time, we're going to head to the south, I think.
Yeah. And we're, part of this coming years grant is to, for AIP, that'll be funded midsummer. We're doing a, the type of obstruction survey that you have to do to redo an instrument approach because approach from the south or approach to the north will have to be redone because of the extension of the runway. So once again, we're trying to bring that together to where when the runway is ready, the new approach will be ready, and it takes about 18 months to get that approach work done.
Were we ever able to get lower, I'm sorry, I was going to say, were we ever able to get lower minimums because that 911 sign came down? No?
That's what I wanted to, we wanted to do. Can you run back to the very first picture you showed there?
Yeah. It's probably a faster way to do this.
That's right. That's why we've got to have an extension of the runway. Kind of explain that. Displaced threshold there.
When the mayor and I, maybe Mike Brooks is the fly, we had a 500-foot displaced threshold due to the railroad track. Now, they assumed that a car would come along that had a crane on it, and for every more, you had a 500-foot displaced threshold. When they redid the configuration of airport surfaces and added a thing called a runway protection zone, RPZ, that created, changed that 500-foot displaced threshold into a 1,379-foot displaced threshold. And so we have 1,379 feet less runway available landing to the south and actually taking off to the north. That's the reason you really want to be landing to the north, taking off to the south. Because when we are done with this extension, we'll have 6,500 feet, 6,550 feet available to take off to the south and available for landing to the north. But you would also only have, you'll have, still have over 5,000 feet available, which is a magic number, you know, for a lot of jets.
Unfortunately, the wind doesn't change like Mary Poppins wants it to, so you just go one way most of the time.
Got to be on a, for that to happen, you got to be on a boat.
Yep.
But that's kind of the short version. I don't think.
And the last time your master plan was updated, was it 2018, 2016?
It's 2013. It was updated.
So it's been 10 years. Are y'all planning on updating the master plan? It's been?
We will be mandated. Once a runway, whether you, whether it was updated this year or 2013, when we finish that runway extension, it has to be, the airport layout plan has to be updated at that point. Now, all along, you do pen and ink changes to it. Every time we buy a piece of property, we have to change the airport layout plan. There are minor changes that are called pen and ink changes, but the, but the large, every five to seven year modification of it does an obstruction survey, not quite as in-depth as you need to modify an approach, but it does an obstruction survey and redoes airspace and takes a look at a whole lot of stuff.
Okay, so 2026, 2027, you're looking at doing it? No?
Hopefully, 2025. Oh, we have 2026 money, yeah. 2026.
Okay. All right.
I think I may have been just about wrong there. Let me check and see if I have anything I'm leaving out. Yep, that was the last line.
Okay, perfect. All right.
That's it.
Any other questions from board members? Anything else? Rodney, anything else you want to add?
Cool. Well, we're, it is, I think, you brought it up kind of incidentally, but the reality is, it is a joint, it is a joint program. It is a joint asset that we share with Mississippi State, and it's becoming more and more important to Mississippi State through the Raspet Lab and the things that are going on there for their experimental program, the drums, et cetera, et cetera. So it's got nothing but growth ahead of it, and I think adding that terminal is going to bring us, instead of the caboose, we can head toward the engine status, which is wonderful.
You know, to add an exclamation point to that, this terminal is going to bring us jet traffic that, at this point, is going to go fine because they have better amenities out there and that sort of thing. I don't think they have better ramp service, but they have better terminal amenities out there.
And more runway.
And when you, the people who use net jets and all these, you know, large charter outfits, they just expect more than what we have. And those operators tend to realize that and go to where, you know, they accommodate that. And so the fuel sales that we have now are tremendous, but the fuel sales that we, we expect a big jump in it when you see this terminal right here.
You didn't show a picture of the terminal that said GTR.
I did not. Did not.
Because it's different than the terminal we all go to and fly Delta out of GTR.
That's right.
It's an FBO.
It's small. It's probably got about twice as square footage that we have, but it's really nice. It's well done.
I was going to say, ours should then mirror, not mirror it, but match it at least in, yeah, in quality, if not beat it.
Oh, we'll be, our goal is to... Oh, we'll, we'll be, our goal is to, we may not be able to hit the bull's eye that they hit with Auburn, because that is big, there's a lot of other things going on in Auburn that are driving that, but.
Auburn now, Alcoa Lock and a lot more people.
They have a lot more people, but we hope to be, this is going to take us from the caboose to, we'll be ahead of Alabama.
We'll be proud of what we get, so that's great, and it's really nice that it's a small match like that, so we're not looking at a 20% match, so. All right, thank you so much, both of you. I appreciate it. We also got a parks update.
I'm seeing, checking with the rest.
Okay, well, in that case, let's just scratch that. He was going to show some drone footage of Poriston, so I'm not sure what's going on with that. So, let's move on. We'll just go on to our, to our agenda. This one's going to be a little bit more robust than we've had for the last couple of times, so we'll be there a little bit longer, so we can plan on that. We've got a couple of sets of minutes. Mr. Huskisson, have you looked at those? Do they look like they're good for consent purposes?
Both approved.
Any issues with that? Do we go to consent? Okay. We've got some new employees introductions, and I intend to make mention of Mr. Kemp's, people who are still doing a solid for the folks in Amory. And, were they enrolled or get on?
No.
They're just in Amory? Okay, they are still up there, so I want to make sure we mention them, mention them on Tuesday night, and when they come back into town, we'll acknowledge them in person. So, anybody have anything they want to highlight? Okay. Public appearance, we've got also utilities' energy rights top performer award, which the utilities department is getting. They're going to make a presentation, or TBA is going to make a presentation, so we'll enjoy accepting that, and Mr. Kemp will be there to be part of that. Under public hearings, we've got a request for a variance from a wall sign. Mr. Havlin, would you just give us a little?
Yeah, this is for a wall sign for Columbia Industries. It's just, I think it's like 42 something square feet bigger than what's allowed, so this went before Board of Adjustments Appeals at the regularly scheduled meeting, and they voted unanimously recommend it.
Okay, and they've got a kind of a quasi-sample of it up right now, don't they? Is it temporary?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think they do, so. It doesn't, it doesn't oversize the building, because it's such a big, big building, so. Okay, obviously, that can't go in consent, but it's, it is, will be a public hearing and then consideration of that. And then, next, we have the special exception. You want to share that with us as well?
Yeah, this is a special exception and a variance. So, one, special exception with the planning zoning, the variance went to Board of Adjustment Appeals. This is for Brooksville Gardens. They're doing a massive renovation of the structures. They're doing some improvements to the parking lot, but they're not increasing the size of the parking lot, like adding additional spaces, and they're not going to change the dimensions of the parking lot. So, because those don't meet our code currently, they've had to get the variance in a special exception. And the planning zoning, they approved it unanimously, and it was also approved unanimously at Board of Adjustment Appeal, which is one condition, that the variance, or the variance doesn't apply to ADA parking. So, dimensionally.
All right. Again, that will be up for consent, but it will give us an opportunity, and hopefully in Brooksville Gardens, that will move forward rapidly. Yes, sir.
When are they supposed to start?
Well, as soon as, as soon as they get these variances done. I have offered them the opportunity to get their building permits, but they wanted to wait until they got these variances before they started, but they are ready. We are geared up to give them building permits as soon as they come in.
Yeah, the permits are already in the system. It's ready.
Yeah.
That's good.
We did that a couple of months ago, so they, we've been ready to go. They just needed to get some other things, financial ducks in a row and get these variances done for that confirmation. So, should be starting very shortly after, after we have our meeting on Tuesday. Next item is going to be public hearing for the properly located 109 Roosevelt Taylor Senior Street, which is going to be our, one of our 211911 projects. Again, we knew that they were coming forward, so we've done all the proper advertising. Mr. Huskisson, you've looked at those, and those advertisements are appropriate? Okay, so there'll be two of those. The other one is at 617 West Main, so we'll have two of those. Then, we have our second public hearing in consideration of amending the UDC for right-of-way protection. You haven't had any comments or information from the public on this, have you?
No, no, ma'am. I've sent it out to a few folks, no comment.
Okay, all right. So, that, again, another one of those things for consideration. And then, first, public hearing to adopt ordinance to allow for tax abatements. That was what we discussed last time, and so this will be our first public hearing on that. Anything, have you heard from anybody on?
I've not heard from anybody, and the thing that I hope that y'all are all thinking about, and I'm more than hoping to changing, is how we define that central business district. I've defined it about as broadly as it can be defined. You may want to reel that in a little bit, just as you think about, this is something that we're trying to encourage people to develop, and so are there areas where we want to focus it?
Okay, well, and that will be, you know, that'll be one of the things. After the first public hearing, perhaps we'll be hearing from some, and if not, we can have a slightly further discussion at the next board meeting, and we'll be taking it up for consideration. So, all right. Then, under mayor's business, we have calling for public hearings on amending sanitation ordinance. This, this is because, as Mr. Smiley and I were checking on things, and in fact, it's in Alderman Vonsburg, we had a vacant lot where they had cleared the lot and put it all on the side of the street. And because it's a vacant lot, they aren't paying any sanitation fees. And so, we have, you know, the way we're structured, we do that, we end up doing that for free, which we really, you know, shouldn't be doing. So, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is set it up so that we can invoice for those folks who don't have an account already existing through Starville Utilities, and that allows us to recoup some of what we, what we're doing by picking up rubbish and that sort of thing in the city. So, if it's a vacant lot, we know they've got no, no power, no utilities account, then we have another way to invoice them. So, that's what that's pretty much about. And that's just calling for the first public hearing, so. And the second one is, and this is based on something that Alderman Rupp. Nice to meet you. So pleased to have you onboard, actually. Alderman Rupp had mentioned a while back, when we were doing some other things, like our interactive web, website, and the, I'm sorry, interactive map, and then the push, push notifications, is how do we get those out, and who do we use in-house service? And then, narrative 12 is who Utilities has been using, and I think they've been incredibly successful in getting their message out recently. So, this is perhaps an opportunity for us to do kind of a test run. It's a six-month contract with narrative 12 for us to see if we can utilize their services, and if it makes a difference, as we're trying to get information out about the things that we're doing, positive way, talk about employees, talk about services. The funding I took, it's a neutral funding in the sense that I, we're not spending many money that we were already not, that we were already planning to spend, because I pulled it from some of my remaining professional services account funding, and then some funding from the juvenile detention facility, which we are going to spend, because we canceled that contract. So, it is revenue-neutral in that sense, but it also is something we haven't done before, but I really would like to try this out. So, that's, that's what this is about, and the contract is in there. It's an identical contract, pretty much to what Edward had, only it's a six-month as opposed to an annual contract, so.
I think it's important to have somebody help us tell that story in a way that maybe is a little more media savvy than some of us are, but.
And all I'm doing is doing Twitter and Facebook and stuff, so this might be a better way for us to do that, so. Any, anybody have any comments or thoughts? Again, it was, it's your fault. You're the one who made me think about doing it more professionally.
I think it's worth trying. We can weigh, since we're not spending new money on it, we can weigh.
And maybe at some point, it'll be something we do in-house. I mean, we have a media person. It won't be the first time somebody had a public information officer.
I do think there's a lot of stuff the city does that doesn't get out there, and this might tell us on the, on the communication.
Yes, okay, all right. So, anyway, and we can, you interested in putting in, is that good for you? Will you put that on consent? Okay, let's give it a shot. The next is a consideration adopting a standing budget development policy for the city of Starville, and we provided that last time around when we had our work session. So, any comments or thoughts on that one that Alderman Sis Rupp crafted and provided last time? Any thoughts?
There's one line, one section out there. I think the language is a little soft.
That's an interesting.
Let me know.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, I got a couple issues, too. I hate all the, all the, I have a pleasure here, but I don't want to say it.
No, I don't, we won't. I wasn't planning on it, because I do think it deserves some potential discussion, but do you want to do some of that here? I mean, this is a good place for.
Do you want to send an email?
Yeah, let me just do that. We'll bring it back here.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, we'll leave it, we will leave it off and move on to, we have a resolution. This is the general obligation bonds for the parks. So, you know, as we are, we are ready to do some issuance. We had approved the authorizing, and now this is an issuance for us to begin the process. We're doing JL King, Needmore, the key. Obviously, you know, the parks are a focus for us, and so I'm looking forward to us getting those things rolling. So, this is that resolution. Any consent for that? Any issues with that? Okay. Under department business, we have the airports. So, we have approval of the lowest quote for the corporate hangar. Mr. Lincoln, if there's anything you want to add about any of these three items, feel free to do so, but it's the corporate hangar, and then we have authorization for the design, and then advertising for airport engineering consulting services. So, any of that you wish to share any additional information on? Self-explanatory?
No.
Oh, okay, all right. Any consent for those? Okay, all right. Under community development, we have a final plaque for College View. Mr. Havlin, anything?
Yes, this is just a simple splitting of an existing line. It's the corner of College View and Urban Street, and it's just making two separate lines.
Okay, all right, and they fall within everything we need for that?
Yes, and there's just one condition. It's like a standard condition about the sidewalk. You either build it before we sign the plaque or have support issued.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. Under engineering, we have a proposal from Atwell to prepare the bid documents for 182 bill grant. This is, we're doing, we're breaking it out some, correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, we're breaking it out so that perhaps we can get some better pricing on this as opposed to doing it all at once, so this is an opportunity for us to see if we can get those bid documents and see what they say.
That's right.
Fingers crossed, guys, everybody, please.
Consent.
Consent for that one? Okay. Approved revision one to standards of designs and specs to align with the recent UDC revisions. Anything specific about that that's worth noting, or is just to make the language?
That's right. We updated the UDC and had language in there that's changed and adopted, and now this policy doesn't match. So, this is the nursing malls policy that goes with the UDC, so they're just going to come together in this one.
Make sure they marry up and nothing conflicting. Consent for that? Okay. Authorization approved sole source quote, which is always an easy one. Consent for that one? Okay. Consideration approving springer engineering. This is going to be for our, for our new annex areas, our chip seal, so looking forward to getting that ready for our summer project, so we will be taking care of those in the new annex territory. Consent for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Approval to select Garber as the construction engineering inspection consultant for Spring Street. How many applicants did you have?
So, this is from the MDOT shortlist. I think there's, there were two that you can select from, and Garber did the design, so you have it. Now, they inspect their own plans, so they were selected.
All right, okay. Consent for that one? All right. We have claims docket, and then we have approval of budget adjustments. Would you give us a kind of a brief one on that one? You got any big ones?
There's not really anything, no big ones. It's just really, I had to say, reshuffling of some items, maybe like the juvenile detention funds that we won't be spending. We've got a little bit of extra for everything, some policies, just, which is kind of, it's a reshuffle. There's not really anything.
Okay, all right. Anything back? You want to?
I was just going to say, this is part of the budget development process. You never get it exactly right through things that came up. We had a grant that we accepted this year that we did not know about as we were going through the budget process, so getting that into the budget, recognizing some revenue that we had not expected, as Lisa says, adjusting expenses for things where we know operationally there are changes. Listen, part of what we're paying is the two kiosks, but our revenue has been up just a little bit. It was up before the two new kiosks. Just some offset here, offset. Where they link, whether it's put those together, where there's a relationship between the amendments, and then the rest just follow them to.
General category?
Just a general category. So, there's a big one in the department, it's just a general category.
Consent.
Question about that? Consent, okay. Fire Department, we've got travel for Fire Marshal Martin Currie and Captain Dwayne Davis for Gulfport, and then we've got Fire Marshal Martin Currie and Fire Inspector Jonathan Wade to Gulfport again. They're going to be spending a lot of time in Gulfport for the Boam conference, so consent for those. Okay. And then, HR, we've got hiring Bonnie Brumley Edwards as an administrative assistant for community development.
Consent.
Consent for that one? And then, promotions, which we're happy to see for our fire department folks.
Consent.
Consent for that one? And then, hiring for customer service rep for Starville Utilities.
Consent.
All right. And then, parks, advertising for bid for the football field lighting project, so deciding about giving that one going. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then, police, we've got requests for attending the Motor Cops Wings and Wheel Foundation Training Event and Competition, so I expect you to come back with a blue ribbon or whatever color ribbon that would be.
Consent.
Consent for that. Ms. McQuarrie, she did a nice job, by the way, I would say, doing their program this morning at Over Street. They're doing it in two phases. I was doing nine o'clock one this morning, and they did a great job. A bunch of kids had a, had a really nice time, so consent for training on this one. And then, the list of unmarked cars, which we have to do by statute also. Then, utilities, Mr. Kemp, anything in particular about any of these that we need, that you want to highlight?
Just replacement of a cop gear of the next two, or part of the, our capital improvement plan that we discussed in our latest rate evaluation. Have a consultant come in and evaluate both our west waterfront treatment facilities and processes, as well as our water production and treatment. That's what both of these are. We went through a pretty extensive interview selection process on that, and then the last two are related to the Babylon Road project, things that Bill Spencer needed to have incorporated into the business.
Okay, all right, consent for those guys?
Consent.
We'll give it up? Okay, all right. We have no need that we're aware of to go into exact session for, you know, legal or any kind of personnel matters, so as far as we know, that will conclude our program, and still more parks. So, we will call it a day, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, everyone. Looking forward to our Tuesday night. Everybody have a good weekend.
I was trying to make it over this morning.
It was a nice program.